I can't fit it back here.
Yeah, how long we spent setting this first?
Yeah, I just niched it up a bit.
But you just...
Sometimes I like splashed.
Our point is...
Then another tall people.
We need them all.
I heard.
You want to...
But it's not a restart.
Yeah, it's a strong area.
It is restarting about every 20 minutes or so where it just sort max kicks off these or like the purchase.
Looking forward to it. It was somewhere it's bitterness and stress. So it's really heading to hell.
Well, it's not happening.
But so does this, but I mean, I think it's offsetting the case. Was that very blonde and instead of the...
Nancy is second.
One few thousand steps today. Are you on your time?
Cheesecake.
I didn't build today.
A cheesecake.
Yeah, she's sticky.
Really?
I am very...
Wait, you didn't bring me back any greens or anything like that? Come on, man. That's her friends.
Friends.
Thanks for playing.
Yeah, I started my...
Really good.
See, I have a make up. I'm talking. I'm... I'm shopping. I'm... Sorry. What could you have done? See, I'm...
Plus it's cooler. You're kidding.
That is the case. It's the case. It's...
He's talking.
One few thousand steps today. Are you on your time?
Cheesecake.
I didn't build today.
A cheesecake.
Yeah, she's sticky.
Really?
I am very...
Wait, you didn't bring me back any greens or anything like that? Come on, man. Don't have pizza now. Those are friends.
Friends.
Really?
Too much.
Yeah, he's doing... I love the woodchicken.
Thanks for playing.
Yeah, I started my...
Really good.
Really good.
See, I have a makeup. I have a top. I have a top pen. 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 I have a top pen.
Too much.
Yeah, he's doing... I love the woodchicken.
Thanks for playing.
Yeah, I started my...
Really good.
Really good.
See, I have a makeup. I have a top. I have a top pen. 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 Yeah. Too much. Too much. Too much cake. It's a small cake.
So it's sick.
It's very... That's... 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 Plus it's cooler.
You're kidding.
That's... 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 That is the case. It's the case. Right. That's what... That's why you have to send you anything. You're gonna fall back.
I've only almost fallen twice in the... I've really won this. Here, here. Maybe all... Whoops, that went too far. I'm gonna... Such a mom. There. These are eyes for pleasure leaders. We're led by Paul on the party. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the second regular meeting of the village of Boston Spa, where trustees for the month of June 2025, January 23rd. And may I get a motion at the minute of the June 9, 2025 meeting, be for trustee Fadensa, trustee press push discussion. So there's just one piece that I'll just continue to bring up. Okay. It says trustee Baskin feels the minutes are incomplete and again requested amendments in minutes. And so I continue to be disappointed that there's no indication of why I think the minutes are incomplete or what amendments are requested. I think that's an omission. Should be in the minutes.
All favor.
Aye.
I'm gonna have statements.
Aye. Oppose, I'll... Like one exception from trustee Baskin. Um, gonna be moving this meeting along pretty fast. Obviously, because we'll start getting warmer here with the number of bodies we have in here despite the AC. So we'll just try to expedite as we can in different positions here.
Can I just make one comment about if we... The sound levels have been low in the past meetings and with this AC, it may be hard to hear. I don't know if there's a way to increase the sound levels, especially for the people during public comment. It's very hard to hear them.
The best way to do it is to speak louder. That's all I can say at this point.
Is there any way to adjust sound level?
How?
I don't know.
Mike talks on one hundred percent.
It seems so fine, damn. Okay.
So we're gonna invite Nancy Williams from Jem. James Best, ready now with us tonight. But she today I discuss the section eight housing choice voucher program. I'll let you start and then I'll open the public hearing initially at that point.
I have some reports to think there's enough there to pass in the... You know, I have a really very great overview of the section eight program. So the purpose of the hearing...
Why don't you give me a right amount of polling here? That way you'll be sure.
I'm gonna block the air conditioning and people will get annoyed.
You're fine right there.
The purpose of the hearing this evening is about the PHA plan, which the village is required to submit to HUD every five years, and it is how the program is operated. So it is where the regulations allow force of discretion in program implementation. We have to define how we will do that. So that is really what the plan is. It's not about the merits of a section eight program or whether the village should have a section eight program. It's really the village needs to have a PHA plan in place. We prepare and submit that for you. So the report I brought with me just gives you the highlights of your program. You have had the section eight housing choice voucher program in the village since 1978. You have 126 housing choice vouchers. You have 12 people in our family self sufficiency program, which is the program designed to work with families who have earned income to increase their earned income and to set goals and to work their way towards greater economic self sufficiency. You currently have three participants in that program with escrow accounts, and you have two participants who have used their section eight housing choice voucher to purchase homes and to help them pay the mortgage on a home as an asset building model. So we understand that people do better when they have more assets at their discretion to manage the ups and downs of life, and that program is how that we implement that policy. You have 626 people on the waiting list currently. 21 of those are people living or working within Boston Spa currently.
Can you say that one more time?
627.
And you said, how many vouchers are there currently in issuance?
126.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, we have 11 of those of the folks on the waiting list currently. 52% are elderly and or disabled. The next person we expect to reach applied to the program in May of 2024. Um, we have 119 families receiving assistance. So I say you have 126 vouchers. Depending on the portion that section eight pays and the cost of rent, that number may be variable based on the actual cost. So we allocate 126. We currently have 119 in the field. 97 or 82% of the people on the program are elderly and or disabled. You have nine people who have taken their voucher and moved elsewhere, and 10 people who have brought a voucher into Boston Spa from elsewhere. That's called portability. Um, we had 202 total inspections in 2024. 160 of those passed. We had 42 that failed. In those instances, we generally work with the tenant and or the landlord to get that unit up to where it needs to be to pass the inspections. It's far, far greater value to a tenant and the landlord to keep people in place than to move them if whatever the issue is completely addressed. We have some new regulations that have come into place in HUD in the world of our inspections or housing quality standards, and that has kind of made some of the... That number looks a little high, but those regulations went into effect and may be part of the reason for that. Um, the average number of years people stay on the program is 7.6 for our elderly and or disabled families. That's about eight years. The average gross monthly subsidy that we pay to landlords is $1,519, and the average... Excuse me. That's the average income of people on the program, and the average subsidy that we pay is $722 per household. If anyone has any questions?
Bring a question. I mean, um, let's say somebody goes on a waiting list today and puts in enrollment. What's... What is the anticipated wait time to get one?
Well, so it looks like we're running about a year. I would say it's probably a year to eight months. And that, that supposes all things state even with the program now.
But with 600 on the waiting list, but only 100 plus in issuance, you said, how does that even work? I mean, how would these 600 excess suddenly get vouchers?
So a portion of those don't currently live or work in the area. So what would happen is they would have to come to move into Boston Spa. They would have to find suitable housing that would meet our standard, and they have to engage with the landlord. The renting up process in most of our small programs, small municipal programs like the village, is very difficult for anybody to actually port into a program. The cost of housing is extremely high. They don't have the resources they need. They frequently don't rent up on the program. So with your list of having 21 people that are P1 and of those 11 are elderly or disabled, they are always the first priority. So we would have to exhaust those people before we even entered into any conversation with someone who did not currently live or work in Boston Spa.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, sure.
All right. All right, so 21 are... Good luck, Ben.
21 are letting you work in program here.
Yes, and they are P1s. I mean, they get priority over anyone else on your waiting list.
Right. Can you just tweet out that, that next statement? Date next applicant to be offered assistance was placed on waiting list.
Yeah.
So 2024 is the last time an applicant is on the wait?
No, that's the person... That's the date of the application, that the date we received the application from the first person in line for the voucher.
That's a very specific year. Since they apply, it has a voucher basis.
And you don't let people just add to the waiting list on...
We don't close our waiting list.
Oh, you don't close?
No, we haven't. It will depend on how funding flows in the future.
Right.
But we have it to date, close our waiting list. We have some waiting lists that we discussed that day. We have five and ten year waiting list for Sertolik County, for example, so...
It's connected, they close it.
They do. Most of the municipal housing authorities do. It's just a lot to manage on a roll basis.
Do you something... Sorry, you go back to the waiting list. Do some... It's not longer than times for people who don't want their booking in this area but are still on the waiting list?
Yeah, so they could be off... They could be on the waiting list. So I don't know the next, the date, the date of the next applicant, but if they are on that waiting list, they may have already rented up or left the area if they couldn't find affordable housing.
Is there some mechanism that notifies you guys if they're utilizing a service in other parts of the state or...
So we go through a process where we clean, we clean our waiting list up. We'll send letters to anybody that's been on the waiting list for a year and say, if you're still interested, please reach out and let us know. So there is some attrition based on people moving and relocating.
I think I had something else I thought.
Yes. I don't know how familiar you are with a particular application. It goes from October 25 to 2029, looks like.
The five year plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
And it said like, figure how the gold strategies are not required at this time. When would they be required on this front?
So that's probably a question more for Jim than for me. He does, he prepares this, but my... My calculated supposition would be that if there were instances or reports made that there were violations of federal, federal housing regulations, that we might have to put in a play, a plan in place to...
So there's no record of it?
Correct.
And on that, on that plan, it said 162 housing vouchers. Does that count down?
It has, yes. And that again speaks to the cost per family of housing. The housing market is, it's no surprise to anyone, is extremely expensive now in every community.
And then last, it says, management employs a full time program integrity coordinator of function and reduces product abuse. So that's not the village, that's your program.
It is.
Your program. Tell me again where you're from.
Joseph E. Mastroianni Incorporated. Our office name is Jem Inc. Central Office, Section Eight, and we have managed the program for the village since inception.
And you stole a treasure from us along the way, too.
Unapologetically.
I agree, I agree you'd say that. Tell Barbara we said our best words.
Absolutely.
All right. All right, thank you. So Joseph E. Mastroianni.
Why don't we open up the public hearing officially here at 7:11 PM for comments from the audience? As usual, please raise your hand if you want to speak in room. Raise your hand on Zoom if you'd like to speak on Zoom. It's five in a limited public hearing purposes. Nancy is authorized to answer questions she can answer along the way.
That's absolutely...
Why don't we wait till the end of the comments and then if people want to nail some questions to come back and answer? That might be the best way to do it, so we don't have to continue back and forth. And any questions or thoughts? Liz, go ahead.
Ms. Corcello, say you night high. I'm just trying to figure out the math of this because on the document it says 162 vouchers. Are those still available vouchers? And why is the number on document? So, because you said 126 plus 12, plus 12, right? For the family self sufficiency, that individuals and family self sufficiency are also vouchers. Are those in the 126?
Like I said, this is just like an end of public hearing session.
Oh, sorry. So I really have questions for her.
Well, you can direct them to us and we'll ask them.
Anyways, I was just trying to figure it out because I looked at this program back in 2022 when I was trustee, and there was 120 vouchers, and now this says 162. They're increased. And in last March, at the village meeting, you made a comment that we weren't using all the vouchers, and then made a comment, you know, that's highly unusual because as was stated earlier, there's a lot of people on the waitlist. So I'm just trying to understand how this works and potentially how it relates to the post canary comments because they are required to accept section eight and if that has any influence on this program. And then the second question I have is what we expect with the changes on federal level where, read some articles, where they want to get, put in section eight further. So those are my questions.
Thank you. Any else have questions incorrect or any public comment incorrect related to this? Nothing I'm... Nancy, when you and Jim gave me a talk about the usage, it was consistent with actually something you had said, I think, earlier about the widening of the boundaries to allow certain usage and whatnot. Could you elaborate on that special back one?
Yes. So there was a period in time where we weren't maximizing the number of vouchers that the village had, and we discussed the concept of broadening the boundaries of the program because it's village centric. People have to live and work in the village, live and or work in the village to be eligible. And so we did have some conversations with the mayor about maybe broadening the boundaries a bit to include some other areas in the town that might also need access to the program. Since then, because of many, many factors up to and including the fact that the cost of housing has changed drastically, those vouchers are now really off the table because they're being fully utilized.
It's amazing what two years, what I think was our conversation about two and a half years ago when we first thought and the changes in that small period of time already.
And then go speak to some of the questions you asked about the numbers. So I think at the program's inception and in the plan, the allocation was 162 vouchers. We always hoped that we would get back there. The allocation in numbers is also tied to an allocation of actual dollars, and if the actual dollar allocation doesn't support the number, then the number will naturally be lower because we're spending more per household than we anticipated initially, and that's why the numbers can seem a little bit off.
Can I just...
Sure.
Just, so you have 126 vouchers. How many people told me, sir, do you know?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm certainly, I'll certainly ask at the office and get that information to you.
Nancy, thank you. I want to ask for a motion to close public hearing at 7:16 PM. Trustee Fadensa. Trustee Baskin, discussion. All favor. Oppose. Motion carries. And we'll get to the actual resolution in a little bit here.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And technically, it was a presentation alongside public hearing. No further presentations beyond that. Public comment on agenda items only is up next. L. B. Freeman is for speaker. There is a walk on here with respect to a contract with the refrigerators for candy fun day for valued $2,650 for their concert and the ability for me to execute that agreement after review by...
Ellen.
She's reviewing, and she loved it, I guess.
Mom.
She liked it enough for me to execute it. It was fantastic.
And it's legally permissible.
Thank you. Appreciate it. But anyways, that is a walk on, so that would be within the rights for this agenda items only public comment session. If you want to speak on Zoom, that would be a great time. Raise your hand there. Otherwise, anybody in the room wants to speak, the treatments. See none? See none. God bless all of you. Does anybody want to remove consent agenda item? Hearing, none? Got to get a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
How many?
Trustee Raymond?
Great.
Trustee Baskin, discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Got to give a motion approving the attached resolution adopting the section eight housing choice voucher program, PHA plan for 2025, authorizing the mayor to execute documents consistent with that resolution. Trustee Fadensa. Trustee press push discussion.
The only question I have is back in March of 2024, where the contract, or the plan was, there was a motion to approve, said to approve the attached resolution. Was that, and we did vote on it, but there wasn't a resolution, there was just the agreement. So is this an actual resolution?
The five year plan, right, presentation. I think that's just the annual servicing that they do for us. It was the only thing...
The only thing that happened, just to make sure we got the... The only attachment in that on March 24th was the five year plan, and we did vote to approve a resolution, although it wasn't in a resolution form. So maybe we're doing that here.
Well, we realized somewhat we needed a public hearing. That might be the issue there. That's over here going down. My apologies. That was what that was. Yep. Everybody, your trustee, your attorney here.
All right, so we're catching up to that.
Yeah. All favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Got a motion approving asbestos services agreement between Ambient Environmental Incorporated and Bill's Boston Spa for $3,050 plus $500 additional cost per stamp running second, authorizing the mayor to execute agreement. Trustee Fadensa. Trustee Raymond, discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Got a motion that John, I believe it's Gaba, he appointed as a Park Time Police Officer. Trustee Fadensa.
How's it going?
Trustee Baskin, discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Got a motion approving the contract between the Bills Boston Spa and the refrigerators for $2,650 for performance during family fun day and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement. Trustee Fadensa. Trustee press push discussion.
Is that the total amount or just the upfront and then there's more later?
No, that's the, I believe, confirming. Six, seven, five, oh, three, the total amount. All favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Mayor's announced he's gonna post a Facebook just to expedite, again, with this heat, I don't want to risk maybe see a situation not keeping up with this here. Treasure report, just want to remind everybody that taxes and your meter cards are due at the end of this month, which is in one week. So please get your meter readings in and your taxes paid to avoid penalties slash charges. Let's go to liaison reports. Uh, bring that.
I'll keep my group to you regarding the SCPA, the business association. They're having their first concert this Thursday with the Boston Spa, and that starts at six o'clock until eight o'clock at Old Iron Spring. Are you playing this?
I'm...
Nice. I like that we musicians on this ward. But anyway, that's the start of the season. You have a lot of, you know, regular features lined up for the year, for the summer season. And as far as Boa, we had our meeting last Thursday, and we discussed kind of the feedback that we got from our last public workshop, but also kind of identified areas and property or stuff that's still a budget job to as a committee. So those discussions are continuing now. Nice and short.
Yeah, go ahead. Good luck, though.
The library, their air samples came back, came for the entire building. They still have so much, and they're thinking still, April, July, October.
We have a call tomorrow actually goes through with hospital procurement hurdles that we may experience, but we're gonna work to do what we can. Also, the asbestos work itself will now get pushed out to the fall to avoid costs because the air samples are showing that we cannot operate safely in the library for time being, but we still want to get that resolved and added in basic areas.
Will that result in like a month long closure?
Uh, two to three weeks probably was the answer we got initially, but again, trying to get the backlog summers. Care on corners and that will get the bids in, save some money because asbestos work, we learned recently, very expensive in summer because in schools, they need the asbestos work. Contractors don't need these situations, whereas in October, different world at that point. Sorry, Sid, you're under that one.
Oh, no, no. That's my, thank you for the information. Also, the library wants people to know they can register online for all the reading programs. They have from children to adults. It's on the website, you know, the Facebook page, there's only two, the registration dates and two reading logs. And they will be hosting storytimes before movies under the stars at Old Iron Springs on July 1st and August 1st. Sure.
Thank you. Ben?
I'll read quickly. The park and tree board is absolutely thrilled with installation of the pavilion in Wizwell Park. They are so excited to have the park open and have witnessed all the passive use events taking place in the park. The new layout seems to be very conducive to vendor events, dividend, farmer's market, summer kickoff festival. It's a nice to notice folks walking through the park, seeing the water and relaxing on this. The board appreciates everyone who reached out, compliments, appreciation via purchase of social media. And they thank everyone involved in the case and work. There's still work to do, but completion of the first phase of it would feel very happy. The park and tree board is also excited about everyone who signed up for B-Swat in Bloom and has been learning of floral arrangements throughout the business district. Thank you all, thank you to all who chose to participate. Currently, we are working on a plan for planted native flowering shrubs in Wizwell Park as well getting some work trees in town in Milton M. The next meeting is Tuesday, July 15 at 7:00 PM. They're open meet in Wizwell Park, weather permitted, with a pack of locations for the Cornell Plaza conference. And then the committee on the arts, they want me to keep plugging their sketch and print the native inspired creative journey, a three-week immersive art experience that brings great intensity to life. It's hands-on program, a bit of printmaking and whether you're a beginner or seasoned art enthusiast, this class is what you enjoy and express yourself. So week one is August 24th, sketching the beauty around us and then the basics, some major applied sketching, relax before the setting. Week two is August 31st, intro to printmaking, higher hand and simple printmaking techniques and watch your sketches come to life. Sketch and print creative day, bring it all together, develop your own creative project, sketching and your printmaking. No expense necessary, all supplies are included, it doesn't, it does cost $60 and you need to pre-register with Portside. San Antonio Store Hall, my side. And all still up, our levels, space is limited. And it is, it's at Portside Museum. And we're quite, for more, branch you can have that OTT, H-U-A-M, at U N R. A possible by Serco Arts. Their next meeting is July 2nd, 7:00 PM at Portside Museum.
Yeah, special thanks everybody at Portside for helping us out with these events, their meetings and everything else. They've been doing a great job to.
Like, yeah, and it works for Portside too because it brings a lot of people in. So it's a great partnership.
Sean.
Um, PPW, uh, there's a few, few items, um, other than their general duty things they do every day that are too long on the list, especially this meeting. So they finished getting the pool ready for the season, new filter is working great so far, so that's, that was a good investment. They packed some paid water main breaks that they had previously and they're crimping several control street for replacement. And they've also been getting the power ready for the gazebo and the lights in Wizwell Park and installed lights on the flagpole.
Just, just on that note, the lighting was while we've completed inclusion statement in our tree, go 10 feet to 14, which is the streetlights that are on the street right now and just offset a little bit better and working a little bit a little taller as well. So we're just trying to get final numbers on those, see what procurement standard we're going to need to utilize for. So we might have something about three weeks at the next meeting with respect to those lights and what we need to get.
So when you change the height, did they do a lumen study?
They actually recommended less lumens coming out from them at 10 feet. Yeah, we were using the balance electrical lighting for our.
Yeah. So then as far as metering, they're working on the commercial meters and they have done a few meter replacements. And John Street Tower has been filled with water and samples taken, taken, and we're waiting new results and if they get clean bill of health, put that in service.
Right.
And all the other little things that they do on a weekly daily basis.
Especially 97 degrees outside.
Yeah.
Thanks to them for bearing that today, tomorrow especially.
That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Old business, I'm going to go on order on this. OEM, very, I think, if you saw the email earlier, Carla wants to get back to you on legal review on that. Okay, would you, we wanted for, to be tuned out to give formal review on that. So we'll get back today in three weeks. I'll keep putting it on there until we get it resolved as old business as they promised to you. Zoning, there's the desire, I think, to get a special meeting scheduled. I was talking to Carla about her schedule, my schedule earlier, okay, because mine gets a little bit weird, at least married, among other things. So we've got some unusual stuff going on in my life, mind and scent. So I think we had leaned on after July 4th could be the necessity at this point. Maybe the 7th, maybe the 8th, 7th may not make much sense because it's so close to July 4th still, so we might, yeah. 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th doesn't work, 14th is our next meeting. 15th maybe, 16th, no, 17th maybe. Just laying out the possibilities.
Just letting you know, I'm away that week.
Which one, which week?
14th.
The 14th meeting? Okay. Well, this is, that's an interesting issue. Is anybody else not to be in because we know we're not going to have a court, we may need to do contingency for sign-offs on abstract purposes. You can handle. If something changes, let us know so that we can make sure we pay the bills and all that stuff ultimately.
Not planning to miss a regular board meeting, but it'll be hard to have a special for me to attend this special meeting.
Okay, so the 14th though is that we were just talking about, early 14th?
That's a Monday?
That's a Monday.
Oh, I'm sorry, we'll miss that. I'm sorry.
Yep, so that's why I'm asking, Mayor, are you good for 14th? Okay, so again, if anything changes between the three of us, let's communicate on that. And enjoy your vacations, the time away or whatever it is.
I don't have a work obligation.
Well, enjoy the time away.
That never happens.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not upset with you, trust me. But anyway.
Maybe that's something that we've got.
Day 8?
I'll be there.
Let's get more faces.
What, what, okay.
Our backs are very.
That's what you say. And it's kind of the purpose of the special meeting is I did put in my email today, I did put in my email to the board today, um, you know, because I knew this was coming up, um, that, you know, my schedule and then, you know, the purpose of the meeting, if the meeting is to review the draft, would it make sense and be more efficient and effective if you spend everyone's time to have provided all your comments to review and for Chris to review and maybe if Chris wants to come to that meeting via Zoom, um, that way to make it better for everybody. I don't know if it, you know, I'm away until the 7th, from the 27th to the 7th. So if the purpose of the meeting is to really go through everyone's comments and kind of come to a consensus for the next draft, maybe have it, look, I don't know when you're going to get your comments, but Sean, I do appreciate, thank you for supplying those.
Is July 2nd asking too much of the other four of us to get comments in, do you think? How are we doing?
Well, Carla's out starting with 27th.
Right.
But I don't.
You know, it's not.
I thought it says later July. I think there are lots of.
Well, we thought, we thought later in July would have been that week, but 14th probably somewhere.
That's middle of July.
The 18th, 19th, 20th, that takes you to, but I, okay, so.
I think this is.
So there's, there's two questions, say, um, for, one, are we going to be able to get our comments in the second of July? Just, you can say no.
I have to say I'm behind because I was, I was at all last week.
Okay, so that's the case, then it's going to have a conference run next, July 21st. Is everybody better? It sounds like we're always here. July 21st, work for you?
Uh, yes, it is something we want Chris to see.
Probably, I think that makes sense. And so my proposal is that we get our comments in by July 8th, which is what I was just talking about. Does that make sense? And I probably will be moved to sort of check in on you and make sure that everybody's making progress for that. Yes, yeah, yours, yours off, you can have ice cream.
But it's a small stock.
Yes.
Sean put his comments on the version that has the track changes. I have started the track changes comment because we didn't have a substitute process once we, people decided not to include the shared or use the shared document.
Say, say thank you to Carla who's ultimately going to have to navigate what your changes are versus what the old changes were type of situation. I think yours are pretty easy actually, so.
I just commented.
I noticed.
Yeah, I'm not planning to make, it'll be comments.
Yeah, if you're using a document like that, you have to use this comment because there's no way to tell. Uh, 7? 6:30 or 7? What was?
I'd say 6:30.
6:30?
That's, yeah, why, why not 7?
Although.
I was asking, I'm not telling.
No, I'd say 7 because it's easy to forget that it's starting at early this hour.
7:00 o'clock, 21st, 7:21 is 7. Uh, and we'll do that again, we'll enter the 8. Old business will be different comments and I, I. See, was that that tough?
What?
Was it that tough?
No, we just need to have that, the conversation need to have. So I'm glad, thanks for having that conversation so we can do that.
No new business, I'll public comment on any issue three minutes. Again, if you're on Zoom, now's the time, raise your hand. On Zoom, if you want to give public comment on any, on any issue, anybody in the room wanting to get public comment while that is rolling? I see no hands in the room. I see no hands on Zoom. Other business, including the non-existent public comment.
The one question I meant to ask under zoning is, um, how much further is Chris doing? What is his involvement at this point? Is he, like, what else has he contracted to do? I know we gave him another $10,000.
He's going to assist with the other topics to be re-added in later date stuff. He's also working with Carla to do any scouring that's needed and work alongside because obviously he read the document, so he's going to know why certain things, what in certain places might be.
Yes, I talked to Chris, I don't know, I talked to him three or four times today. Um, and he is working with me, so once I get all the comments that the board puts together, he will aid in preparing the, the, the next drafts. Once you hit the public hearing portion of it, there's nothing really for him to do at that stage, because that's all on us.
So basically right now he's navigating the document with Carla to get us into that position so we can get a final draft for public hearing purposes for the boards to review, et cetera. And any final changes are probably so minimal that Carla, from legal perspective, taking care of the more questions substantive anymore about.
And then another question, but Carla, in terms of your role, um, you're looking at the document for legal issues, but it sounds like you're doing other things also. You're editing, you're reorganizing. Are you, just because every hour of your time is very expensive, I'd like to know, you're, it sounds like you're working hand in hand with Chris to actually create the next draft beyond just what's legally appropriate, but other general organizational editing issues? Is that true?
It's not true at all. You're talking about the document that I volunteered to create with Chris to, for the public to understand how their comments, they put their comments in, the, we looked at the comments and what happened with the comments. If you recall, I volunteered to create that because that's what I do under SAP up in the Lake George Park Commission when we do regulations.
When you say volunteer, you're not charging us?
I offered to create this document. Are you going to tell me to not?
No, I, I, first of all, I wasn't asking just about that document.
Well, that's the document.
But I was, we have gone back and forth about that document, but just in general, move that and moving forward, I'm trying to understand your role because of my understanding that Chris was creating that document and that he would present, provide it to us, I didn't know that you were heavily involved in finalizing, reorganizing that document, which is not, in my opinion, a legal document so much as a response to comments. And I thought it was Chris's job to do that, that we were paying for. So I just want to be clear on what you're doing partly, partly to understand what you're doing and also partly because every hour of your time is hundreds of dollars, so.
This is, this is code and code is legal in and of itself. So her involvement would necessarily be to make sure the code is in correct order, both subsequently and procedurally along the way. That would be her job and that's what we, we worked with Chris to get it from the ground up and now she's basically doing the handoff. It's what I, I seen it as.
That's what I understood in general, that she was looking at the code for legal issues. Uh, this document seemed like a, it was not a code document, it was a supplemental response to public comments. So that's why I was confused about the level of your involvement in that and why we could not see the document from Chris. But I'm glad that you have.
Do you want me to respond?
Email. Yeah, if you want to.
Well, you asked me a question, so I want to be able to respond.
Go ahead.
As counsel to the village, it's my job to use my legal knowledge to make sure that the code that you have and the comments that were created, that really created a lot of the code are addressed and not just a, look at it from a legal perspective, as you put it, but legal perspective is a large area. So for example, the document that you were very, very forceful and be providing you a draft work product to which I've never been asked for clients for multiple drafts before. That is something that we were working on and it's aiding, it was aiding in the creation of the code, it's aiding in my review of the code, it's going to aid you in your review of the code, it's going to aid the public in their review of the code, which is then going to aid me when I go further into the code. This is all part of my job. If there is something you do not want me to do, please let me know and I will step back and do it, but I will do it with an email saying, you know, upon, against advice of counsel, you have advised me not to use this folder.
This is what I would have, was assuming would happen. Chris would send us the, the, his document.
It was my document.
I don't know how it was because he worked on it and it was his, he said he'd write it and then you referred to it as his document. He sent, he sent you the document. I just assumed we'd all see his document and maybe at that point we'd say, oh, this needs reorganizing or this is unclear, Carla, can you work on this? Um, you didn't even let us see the document. So now we have it, you've worked on it, thank you, and I needed to be clear on why we weren't allowed to see that document. So now I, I understand your position.
And do you understand why? Not that you understand what my position is, do you understand the why behind my position?
I think we had two different understandings of what that.
It's a yes or no question.
I think we had, can I, can I answer as I see fit, please?
Well, it's a yes or no.
Um, I think we started from two different assumptions of what that document was. I thought it was a document for the board and the public from Chris and so therefore my starting position was not understanding why you weren't sharing it with everybody. Now that you've explained that you are going beyond just looking at legal issues, apparently, to the organization of the document for public benefit, as, as you said, um, then I will accept that understanding of why I could not see Chris's document earlier. So now that I.
That's not an answer. You do not, you, you accept your understanding, that is.
Carla, just as a straw poll, I think a grand majority of the board is fine with you doing and finishing out here what you see fit because again, this is code, which is a legal impetus to it throughout it. So I don't, I don't understand where this is even coming from, but I see head nodding in that direction right now. I think we're all buying what you're doing.
That document I saw is not code, but supplemental.
Thank you for what you're doing for our village, pay or not, you put in down this work and we appreciate that, thanks. Yes, that's true. As I said, pay or not, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other business, other business, other business? Like a motion that the vouchers be all in the meeting adjourned at 7:42 PM? Trustee Price Bush? Trustee Fadensa? Discussion, all in favor? Oppose? Everybody have a great night, stay cool.